You ready to roll? Look at this. Nobody's here, just Derek and Joe.
Okay.
I can't believe this. This is too good to be true. Okay, call the meeting to order of the Monday, September 23rd. What is it in this meeting? Ms. Lisa Pacheco.
Uh, me.
Bosadick and Ally Galls. Ally, you sitting in for weeks?
Oops, I'm not part of it.
At some point, we'll sign off all the warrants. I sit in here chirping and I wasn't signing. Public discussion period.
Yes.
How did I know? Well, are you gonna preempt your email to me? Oh, this is a different subject.
This is a different subject.
Okay.
I don't know. Last week, I went down to Town Hall on a Monday and asked about the sign that's on Chase Road. This one right here.
Good thing I live in a town that I couldn't see this. Pick and pull.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a new sign that was put up. Don't want our building permit.
There was a sign there, Joe. There was a sign there. Wasn't this a repaint of the sign?
No, this is a brand-new sign. This is all brand-new. And, you know, based on what I know of the bylaw, in other words, and the building code, in other words, it says right in the bylaw and the building code that whenever anything is changed, plus, in other words, that sign is bigger than 20 square feet. That's what the bylaw says also. So, you know.
I think there was a sign there. And if that sign, if there was already a sign there and that was to replace it, I think they grandfathered in. I think. That's something that we'd have to run by the building department.
But the sign that was there had multiple, all different signs. It had J&amp;M on there. It had pick and pull.
That's a bigger sign, too.
Well, they did have a big sign.
Right.
But it incorporated all these other businesses that were there. J&amp;M and, you know, the Cranberry business. It incorporated all that on one sign. And they took that down and put this up. And now, in other words, the other occupants have put small signs on a tripod next to the telephone pole. So, you know, I mean, I, I, I think, you know, intrusive and doesn't, you know, enhance anything on, you got.
I, I get you. I do, I get it. I think we have to, before I say anything that I should say, run this by the building department. The thing is that, you know what? So, I don't, yeah.
But do we give them an open door, in other words, to break the building codes?
Well, that's something we might have to find out. But, I mean, I don't begrudge anybody wanting to put up a sign.
Yeah. Well, like I say, in other words, you drive around town and you see no sign of that magnitude and that quality, in other words, and that ice striking. And when the sign that was there was half the size of that with all the other businesses on it, and then, in other words, upgrade to a sign of that size. And, you know.
Yeah, I've seen it, so.
You've got, you've got an $800,000 house that's being built less than a quarter of a mile away from there. In other words, and, you know, I mean, this distracts and, you know.
Yeah, but the house was being built after there was already a business there. So, the business was there first, the house was up second.
Yeah. I, I don't disagree with that. But, in other words, you know, to put up a sign, in other words, when they supposedly know, in other words, that there's codes and laws that abide by, and just go ahead and do it.
Well, I'm not, I don't think that, we don't know.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? So, maybe, maybe they did go. And maybe the building department said that they don't need. We don't, I don't know.
No, because I was down at the building department and the lady that works in the building department says, "Oh, yeah, I seen that. I knew that." And, "Was there a building permit?" "Oh, no, they didn't take on no building permit." So, you know, I mean, evidently, in other words, you know, based on what I recall from Mr. Bourgeois coming over and charging me, in other words, for a little sign that I had, you know, and saying that I needed a building permit. And it was above the size of what was, you know.
It was above the size, yeah.
I know which one it is, yeah.
The little one that says "Clock repair." About twice the size of this. And they made you take it down.
So, I was able, but no, I was able to cut it down by two inches. Okay? And then it complied to.
But didn't you take it down? You have since taken it down.
Well, yeah, I've taken it down since because I.
Oh, you stopped doing it.
Yeah. But, I mean, that's just my, my chain of thought, you know.
Yeah, well, we'll find out.
I mean, you know, it's nice to accommodate businesses. But, you know, they, they don't do Chase Road a favor. In other words, with all their, their trucks, their trash, that's constantly on Chase Road that they're dropping. And that's part of Millis Industries. So, you know.
Well, that's part of the guys that hold.
That's right.
We had all the troubles with the trucks.
Yep. And they're back, in other words, to overload them.
Yeah?
Yeah. I sent the chief a picture, in other words, last week. A truck coming up the road with a car above the irons. And this time.
And you gotta picture up a.
Well, yeah. Full car. So, you know, I mean, they, they're just there, in other words, and disregarded, in other words, in my estimation, anything, in other words, that the, you know, the town or the neighborhood could, you know, be justified by. That's it. We'll do what we want. That's, that's the chain of thought I get from them. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, before I read this little article, do you need a building permit to put up the flagpole?
No.
You don't? Because I won't read it.
I know.
This interesting story that was sent to me by, by Joe. And he has a new flagpole in the front of his house. But the flagpole comes with some history. His neighbor, was it, was that 50 Chase Road?
Yeah.
Louis Constantine.
Yeah, Louis was 50 Chase Road.
Louis Constantine was a very good resident here of Freetown. He did a lot for the senior center and did a lot for the town. He was involved in a number of things for the town. And his son was on the buyer department. And I believe his son is either a chief or a deputy chief in another town now. I haven't seen Danny in a long time. But Louis had.
Up in Springfield.
Springfield. Louis had constructed a flagpole that was in his front yard for years. And after the house was sold, it was taken down when they fixed the front yard. And it was given to Major John, how do you pronounce the last name?
Buga.
Buga, who was from the United States Army and who lived at 48 Chase Road. And he, apparently, with his trips to Iraq and Afghanistan, he was unable to put up the, the flagpole. So, a few weeks ago, Joe was over there cutting the lawn for the fellow because he was away. And he found the flagpole stuffed in a corner. And he asked if he could take it and rehab it. So, Joe got permission. And he sanded it, painted it, and he put the flagpole up. And now it's flying a flag that was flown at the U.S. Capitol. It was flown at the U.S. Capitol on August 23rd. And Joe has it on display. The flagpole's in front of Joe's house. And he wants to thank Senator Jack Reed from Rhode Island, who was instrumental in getting the flag and the certificate from Washington. Joe, thank you for sharing this story with us.
Well, I knew you were good friends. I mean, I didn't do it, in other words, to, you know, get any publication from it. I just did it, in other words.
No, I know that.
I sent it to you.
Louis was a good guy. And I remember Louis being on, he was a radio officer for the town under, when it was called Civil Defense.
Yeah.
And radio operator. Okay. So, we can move on.
Thank you for the pat on the back.
There you go. Okay, the first thing on the agenda. Listen, do you have anything?
No.
First thing on the agenda is to discuss and approve the proposal for a bid document for preparation for Two County Road as submitted by Town Administrator Richard Brown. And this is for Nobus Engineering. They're providing us with a proposal, a bid document, for the 1.6 acre property site, which is really the old Freetown screw. And approximately 19,000 square foot building occupying the site. I'm just paraphrasing this. According to the screw report, the site contained two Farmer 400 gallon above-ground storage tanks for screw washing and 1,500 underground storage tank for wastewater. They says pool holding tank in Leaching Fields. And this, these items have to be removed from the property. The scope of work is an investigation of the bid legal notices. This is the scope of work. Bid specifications for hazardous material abatement, demolition, utility abandonment, cleaning, and grubbing the earthworks. Site plan, hazardous material building survey report, and concrete sampling results. Nobus will also conduct one bid walk with whoever bids on the property. And this is the first phase of getting someone to begin the process of removing the contaminants and also the building from Freetown screw. The bid for overseeing this is $7,000. Nobus will work directly with the town and its legal counsel, prepare the contract documents with whoever receives the bid. They will request review of the bid package by Mass Development pending authorization by the town. Nobus will assist the town in obtaining a prevailing wage schedule for the Massachusetts Department of Labor Standards. The town, as the owner, will distribute the bid package to interested contractors and record the names of interested contractors during the bid response period. The town will determine any bid deposit fees required for the bid distribution. And will, will be responsible for collecting the deposit slash fees from the interested contractors. Nobus will work directly with the town to respond to questions from the interested buyers. Uh, excuse, I should say, bidders, I believe. The bid response period. Nobus will assist the town in preparing the written response. The town will distribute written responses to the interested. Why does it say "buyers"? It should say "bidders." Bid response will be submitted directly to the town. Okay.
I'll make my motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you want to oppose, no?
No, and we should forward that information onto the building, I mean, the, well, the building department and also the housing authority. So, they'll know what's going on.
Very good. Okay. Approve Architectural Consulting Group LLC Incorporated fee proposal for a feasibility study as submitted by Town Administrator Richard Brown. Now, at the last annual town meeting, we received approval by the townspeople for a specific amount of money to do a feasibility study on our town buildings, on our town, for the buildings. And the buildings that were included in this was the police station, council, agent, town hall, and libraries. So, we have had one person respond to the request for proposal. One company.
The bid came in at $59,000, which is well within our $65,000 that we had appropriated at the town meeting. So, I'm sure that our town administrator did a background check on the company. So, with his, as he submitted, I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose?
No, but can I just say how very excited I am about this, finally?
It's taken a long time.
Yeah.
Taken a long time.
And that just means we're one step closer to really taking care of our buildings. That's awesome.
Okay. Let's see. Next thing here is to discuss the office hours at town buildings for state officials. Because I need to summarize this. As most people know, we have state representatives that come into the town and have office hours for the public. And most often, they come into this building here during the day, during regular business hours. And I would say 99% of the time, they utilize this room here. Those representatives that come in here are representatives of the whole town of Freetown. We recently had a new representative elected who is only, only handles the sonnet area. And Carol Viola has requested to have office hours and utilize the town hall. And although in the discussion with the town administrator, there was a suggestion made by someone, I think it might have been Ms. Viola, to have the office hours after the business, the office, the town hall closes. Now, we have never done that in the past. But certainly, I would open this up for any discussion or motion to have, allow her to use the town hall during regular business hours, or whatever you wanted to talk about.
I think that during regular business hours is fine. Although, there are some Mondays that the Board of Assessors has a meeting, right?
I believe that they sometimes work till 7 o'clock. Ally, is that?
I think until 6:30.
6:30.
6:30?
So, they're there from 4 to 6:30. But I don't know if it's every Monday.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's. Yeah, as long as the building's open, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. But in that case, she would have to use it all downstairs, like, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Because that's, like, that's the only way.
That's the workplace that people get into. Oh, she's certainly welcome to use the senior center.
Any of the time.
During the day.
Right, any of the state officials.
Anybody, anybody, state or county.
It actually would be really nice if they could all have their, their meet and greet public all together. You know what I mean? Instead of, like, one every other week.
Yeah, that way there, everybody.
They're all on the same page, right? And they're all on the same page as to what, what the issues are in town. So, that would be, I mean, at that point, then, if all three of them were gonna be there at the same time, then, yeah.
It would be great.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion or?
No.
Can I have a question? I've come to find, you know, I come down and see them rather often. And they, a lot of times, they'll call and say they're not gonna make it. A lot of times, they just send their aide. And, you know, the aide does not have the answer for you. And they have to go back, in other words, and get the answer and then, you know, call you back. I mean, it, I think, you know, the, them organizing, meeting themselves, in other words, all of, you know, together, in other words, I, I, I think that's probably, you know, because, you know, to, to think that people are gonna go, in other words, after hours, that's the tough part. During the daytime, I think it's even bad enough, in other words, to get somebody to, to show up. But all in all, I think, you know, it's, you know, I mean, there's nothing, like you say, as long as the town hall is open, why not? You know? There's, you know, nothing, you know, she has nothing to do with this side of town. Thank you.
Okay. And I failed to say that the meeting is being recorded, audio and visual, for the town. And I forgot to turn on my little audio recorder. So, that's being done.
Do you, do you want a motion? I don't care. We can make a motion to allow the state officials to use any of the town buildings during office hours.
The senior center, right? They're not gonna use the police station.
No.
Yeah, yeah. Senior center or town hall during regular business hours?
And to go through something about this? To coordinate? They can coordinate with the administrator, assistant.
Okay. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Let's see. What's next on the agenda here? We have to discuss the special town meeting. The deadline for articles. Where it's gonna be held. On what date?
You need how many? I need two weeks. Two weeks. All right. So.
And we don't have an exact date on when she's gonna serve free cash? She won't give us a date.
But when do we think, when did she say?
Maybe sometime early October.
Early October?
What she said.
All right, so.
Diane's coming from DOR in the beginning, this coming Friday.
Friday?
We're seeing the first couple of weeks.
Okay. So, now, we really can't do anything until certified free cash is certified? Because that would be, that would be mid-October. So.
What were the two dates that they gave you?
The 28th of October or the 4th or the 12th of November?
Bruce and Jackie are available on those three days.
But if we push it off to November, or we're gonna be, we're gonna be helterskelter to get the bills out for the tax.
Does that have an impact? How does that have an impact?
Because the end of the year, end of the year stuff has to be all done. And if anything changes, that all has to be. And the DOR has to approve it. See, DOR has to approve certified free cash. Then we have to have our meeting.
And set for cash, right?
Yeah. And then after that, that's when the bills go out. And the longer we push that off, the less time she has to do that. So, we're, we're saying, well, the two dates are the 12th and the 28th. If we shoot for the 28th, is that gonna give you enough time? I'm just throwing this out there.
When is article submission?
Right, but we could, we could, tonight, we could vote to open up the one, the articles and have them submitted by, what's our next meeting?
Are we shooting for the 28th of October?
No, I, I'm throwing it out there.
Yeah, 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 okay.
I'm trying to see if it all works. So.
If we shoot for the 28th and article submission date, that's by the 8th of October?
Today or that, today until October 7th. Then we can vote on them on the 7th. Right?
Yeah.
You'd have to vote on it on that night, though.
Right. All right, so we can close it.
But you will get it until that day?
Why don't we get it, why don't we wait till the 4th? We'll have the 4th. That'll give us a little bit longer.
Because we just said, they said they couldn't make it on the 4th.
Yeah, they can.
No, they can make it.
Oh, okay. Then that, oh, all right. I thought you said the 12th.
No, the 4th, 12th.
All right. All right, then, yeah.
That'll give us more time.
That'll give us more time.
Because we wanna review that stuff first, right? Before we talk a lot.
So, yeah, we can have.
Closing on that, that date, though.
On what, on the 4th?
No, article submission.
No, we can still open the articles and have them submitted by October 7th.
Yeah.
Right? And then, yeah.
Yeah, that's good. And then we, then we have plenty of time to go over.
Actually, you can have them submitted by the Thursday for the 7th. And then that way, we'll have them in our packet and go over them that Monday night and vote on them.
It gives them less than two weeks left.
That doesn't matter. They should already know. And besides, again, it's not to supplement their budget. So, it's, really, they should already have an idea of what they want. I mean, don't you think?
Yeah. So, in other words.
What's the Thursday before?
3rd.
So, if we open the warrant articles now, they have to be submitted by October 3rd.
October 3rd, okay. You'll get plenty of time.
Right. And then we'll have them for our Monday meeting.
Yeah.
We can have a joint meeting with the FinCom to review them.
And then the, the annual, the special town meeting will be the 4th.
Right. Does that work?
That's fine with me.
Does that work? Yeah, all right.
I'll make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to say everything I just said.
Yeah, I'll second. You got everything she just said?
Yeah. The special town meeting will be held on Monday, November 4th at 7 o'clock at the Freetown Elementary School.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lucille, where were you when we needed you?
How'd you guys make out?
We voted to, we had a discussion with the historical commission. And they explained that we should have communicated with them. But we weren't aware of that, at least to have some kind of discussion. And I explained that the decision to paint the building gray was made when Jean Fox was still a selectman. So, the decision was made quite some time ago. She had given us her approval to go forward with painting the building gray. And we decided that we would stick with that decision. The paint, these days, isn't lasting that long. Maybe five years, it'll need to be painted again. And at that time, we can go back to white if that's what everybody agrees on. Paint's already bought. We looked at the back of the building, which is completely painted. And it seems to have lightened up since it dried. So, I don't think it's gonna look that, that bad. So, that's what we decided.
All right. I mean, I knew a long time ago that you guys, I said that today at the meeting. And it doesn't take this board to approve or not approve what you're doing.
Right.
So, I knew a long time ago, a year ago, when you and I first talked about this. And I knew you were painting the building that color, that you guys voted on that, because that was the same color as the kumbala.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. So, that, and I brought it up today, that's the only reason I knew is because, you know, Michael had said, he did research. It was yellow at one time and blah, blah, blah. So, it doesn't take this board to approve or not approve. And we're not gonna micromanage. And if that's your decision, then I think that's your decision.
That's what we decided. And Vince Kine, who's on the board now, got his scraper out of his car. And he scraped where it hadn't been painted. got his scraper out of his car, and he scraped where it hadn't been painted, and you can see the various layers. You can see, the yellow was about the color of your shirt, Ally, and it was also painted a light gray at one point in time.
That's what I thought, I heard that too.
Yeah.
So, the way it was painted today, in the back, that gray is gonna be on the main part, and the trim is gonna be white color?
Yeah, the trim is gonna be white. It's about the color of these pillars here.
It's actually a lot lighter than that.
I think it's lighter than this, and what about the doors?
White.
Are you gonna do white, okay, because we talked about black today.
I suppose we've got time to change that, but I don't think we're gonna have a meeting before it's done.
Okay, you voted to do the doors white.
I don't think we actually took a vote on the doors. I know Michael McHugh said that he had heard a suggestion of painting them black.
Yep.
Our vote was taken mainly for the main color of the building.
Okay, so the doors are, you're not worried about the doors, you wanna just keep it the white, that's fine. We have enough paint for that, I think.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
You said the historical commission was there also?
Yes.
Good, so everybody's on board now.
Yeah, they would still prefer to see it white, but they understand our vote, and we did assure them that in the future, we would at least talk to them, so they were happy with that.
So, since that's a town building, I think that we ought to send the abu dha, just to notice that we need to go on that land, just for morality, because I think legally, we're supposed to do that.
Thank you so much, Lucille, for doing what you did today, and getting out, and attending that meeting, it was important, because we've been working on this for a year.
I know.
And this weather is gonna be perfect this week, so I'd really like to see it done.
The whole week?
I know, it's supposed to be beautiful this week in perfect painting weather, so I'm really excited to see that part done too. And I can actually just see it off of here. Okay.
Geez, so, I heard from the grapevine that Friday is a big day.
Actually, it's next Monday, the thirtieth, yeah, yes.
Are you FRS?
Yes, I am.
Because I'm old CSRS.
Are you, yeah.
And it was always the third of the month was the best day, but FRS is the last day.
FRS is the last day, yeah, so.
I'll tell you.
September thirtieth, that's it.
There's nothing like, actually, my sister-in-law's gonna retire also, but not for, she works for a hospital. So, she, her last day is Friday, so she's pretty happy.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
And I almost forgot, the list of.
So, we can appoint you to more committees and things, right?
You wanna know something, I am not gonna have a minute of free time.
What do you mean?
I'm on the Massachusetts Library Trustees Association Board of Directors, on the committee that they just set up to revise the trustees manual, which is about that thick. I am, as you know, chairman of the Board of Trustees here, the president of Freetown Lions Club. I'm gonna become an Amazon.com bookseller.
Oh, geez.
And I'm gonna work with my husband in his office.
Oh, that's awesome.
What are you gonna do in your spare time?
I know, clean my house.
You know, one of the things I do wanna mention while we get the camera here, is at the last meeting that we had, we had asked Derek and Jeff, if they would be kind enough to inform the public about the Historical Society's open house.
Yes.
And they really did a great job, and Derek did like two days' worth, he had a great follow-up.
I didn't do it personally, but they did.
Yeah, the paper did, yes, and it was great, we really thank you for that. And I'm sure that the Historical Society thanks you because you did a great job.
Can you do me a favor, and you're gonna have to submit a warrant article, so we can reimburse the library for the paint, so just make sure that that gets in.
By October third.
There you go.
See, I was listening.
Yes, yeah, we wanna make sure that we reimburse the library for that, so if you can just make sure that that gets submitted, that would be great.
Think you'll have enough votes to get it on the warrant? After the day?
Right.
Alright, we have to approve the, you all say.
So, is that, is that it for the library?
Yeah.
My husband gave me an errand already.
Uh-oh, no, you're all set.
You have anything you wanna discuss with the board, since you weren't here at the beginning?
Yeah, on the, on the, oh, you mean to discuss with the, with the selectmen?
Yeah.
No.
You're free to go.
I'm easy, I'm easy.
No, that was great news, thank you.
Hey, congratulations on the new ventures.
Thank you, thank you, have a good night, bye-bye.
Alright, next thing is approval of the Board of Selectmen's minutes from September ninth.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now.
Wait, just one thing, it says in here that the town administrator, the town administrator was to research five years of data and have for the next meeting, so since he's not here, can he really have that for the next meeting?
From the old business, we'll have to add that to the old business. We're gonna replace.
We could have replaced the library painting with boat ramp data.
Yes. Okay, next thing is, for the help.
Just, there were two cases of triple E found, but not in human biting, in animal biting, so just the same precautions as usual, please, just, you know, dawn and dusk, and wear repellent, long sleeve shirts. I know that a lot of the area schools have already, before the start of this, decided to cancel or to postpone their games, their late-night games, and almost all of their games are now played at four o'clock in the afternoon on a Friday, until this passes. So, that was, that was a good measure by the schools to make sure that they did that, so. Anyway, just, everybody just use common sense and precautions, and everything should be fine. If anything else changes, we will update you on our website, that's it.
Okay, personnel board, you want me to do my?
Sure. Well, I can do it.
You are doing?
You can just keep doing your deal.
Alright, it's all yours, personnel board.
I have a change of status for John Bernardo for a length of service, submitted by the Highway Department.
I'll make a motion to approve?
I'll second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then, a letter here to, we had an opening on the planning board, do you want me to read the letter?
This isn't for that new opening, this is the, this was for the.
Associate member.
Associate member, yes.
But wasn't, wasn't.
No, they wanted, they wanted, they want this associate at the last meeting that.
I thought this was to replace.
No, and then they want the other one.
The associate to become the member?
No, no, they want to announce the number one.
Okay, okay, so, the planning board's looking for planning, planning board associate member, and there was a letter presented to the planning board on Tuesday, September eleventh, twenty thirteen, and they voted unanimously to recommend Mr. Nicholas Filoso for the vacant position. He has an impressive educational background in architecture, as well as professional experience necessary to serve as a valuable asset to the board, so.
I'll make a recommendation to appoint him as requested by the planning board, as an associate member of the planning board.
I'll second that.
All in favor, you have to say, oh.
All in favor?
Aye. And then, they also asked to announce it, right? Post it on the website for the vacancy that exists, because Mike Motta submitted his reservation last, at the last meeting. Alright, I guess new business? New business, dates of the upcoming Board of Selectmen's meeting. Ally, do we, these dates are correct now?
Yeah.
Okay, so, right now, it looks like the next meeting is gonna be held on October seventh, Monday, October seventh. The next one after that is October twenty-first, November fourth.
Which would be our special town special.
Which will be the special town meeting, we have a Board of Selectmen's meeting before that, and we're gonna hold that at the school, correct?
Uh-huh.
Okay, and then November twelfth, which is a Tuesday, Tuesday, November twelfth.
Why don't we hold that one, like, in case?
Just to, what, if we, what, the Tuesday, September twelfth?
That's the following week.
Right, so maybe we'll just have that one, like, if needed?
If needed, and then we have December second, December sixteenth, and December thirtieth, we're already into December.
Bar.
Hopefully, we don't have any snow. Alright, so that takes care of that.
Our season's been good to us, not that much, so.
Yes, it has, and the other thing too, for everybody, is that sometimes the board does call additional meetings during the week. If something comes up that we have to meet on, we post it, like we post any other meeting. Alright, old business, library painting.
Should be done by the end of the week, I'm gonna keep my fingers crossed, my toes crossed, I'm very excited to see that done, I'm sure you guys are too.
How long, yeah?
Right, how long have you been talking about this?
A year, at least a year. Status of the website upgrade, this has been a long time, so.
Yeah, we don't, we're gonna have any answers on any of this.
No, we don't have any answers, status of financial management policy manual, the COA kitchen, the key fobs, employee handbook, discussing of, a discussion of the Freetown Elementary School lease, that we have to discuss at some point, and I think that's it.
Yeah, if we, we really do need an update on the key forks, because we might have to go for an article for that.
Well, I think that the, doesn't, don't they have an estimate? We haven't, didn't we go?
Do you have the estimate?
Those two contracts, no, send back to them.
Okay, didn't we take a vote on it? Yeah, we voted on it, yeah, last time.
I don't remember that, it's okay, but we're gonna need to, if we do, we're gonna need to have.
Funding article.
Funding, right.
And we also need a funding article to replenish the Highway Department on the, on the stuff for the town hall parking lots. Alright, anything else in the old business, Ally? What about new business? Oh, I know, new business.
Oh, boy, when he said that, I get, I'm like, okay, here we go.
New business, new business, new business. We've had a number of complaints, concerns about Porter Pastures. Now, Porter Pastures is a recreational facility on a sonnet bay off of Grant Dean Road, for anybody that doesn't know. It's a conservation property under the control of the Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission has done a lot of improvements down there over the last number of years, and a lot of people utilize Porter Pastures, under our rules, under the conservation rules, to utilize Porter Pastures, supposed to have a, either a town sticker that allows you to get to the transfer station if you're a town resident on the town beaches, or a conservation sticker, which is issued at the town hall by the Conservation Commission. But anybody can get a conservation sticker. Now, some of the residents that live near there are very concerned with, sometimes, the fact that there's, I guess, trash left around, certainly, the town has put a receptacle there for trash, did that so that people would be considering putting trash in the barrel, and I think that probably has happened more than it hasn't happened. I know that there's a lot of people that go down there for blue crab. People like to fish for blue crab, generally, when you fish for crabs, you use some type of, you don't use a hook and a line, you use a line with ham bone on it, or a chicken bone or something, or a chicken leg in it, and that's how you get the crabs to bite on it, and you pull the crabs in slowly, and there you get your blue crabs. One of the things, I know in the last probably eight weeks, I personally gone down there, once on the weekend, three other times during the week to see what the place looked like, and the times I went down there, there was, one Sunday, there was two families down there, blue crabbing. When I say two families, they had, each had a couple of children, certainly, they weren't from around this area here, but they did have the town decal. And the other times when I went down there, there was nobody down there. But I would like to entertain a motion to request that Police Chief Carlton Abbott instruct his sonnet patrols to at least stop in there twice a shift, we run three shifts a day, and just call in that they've checked the area, and report back what the condition of the area is, you know, so we have it on the log, so we can go back, and we can, certainly, Carlton's system over there allows us to put in an address or a particular location, find out how many calls we have, so we can actually analyze what's going on down there, just to keep everybody happy. And I think it would be good for the town, and good for the residents that live down in that area, so we can make sure that we keep a handle on, on anything that goes on. Now, certainly, whatever data that is collected through the controls, definitely will be shared with the Conservation Commission, because they're the people that control that area, so.
Is there a seasonal?
Well.
When is crabbing end?
I would think by, I would think by the end of November. That's enough, and then, we can, we can look at it, and certainly, maybe in the springtime, we'll have some ideas. I saw that, an email today from one of our residents who indicated that they had made contact with the Fish and Wildlife people, and they were gonna try to secure some signs that gave the rules for blue crabbing and so forth, and I think that's, that's a great idea, and I commend those people that have taken an action to move forward. And we have to do our share by making sure that that place is occupied.
Alright, I'll make a motion to follow your suggestion, have that area patrolled at least twice a day.
Twice a shift?
Twice a shift. Yeah, for a finite amount of time, though.
Yeah, yeah, probably to the end, maybe the end of November, when nobody's down there anymore. Once it gets colder, there's not gonna be anybody down there. Okay, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
So, Ally, can you just send maybe Carlton a notice? Because I'm sure he's gonna do that, I was talking to him earlier today, to make sure he didn't have any issues with that. Anything else?
No.
You're kidding me?
Right?
This is a good day. It makes up for the time that we spent today down at the.
Yeah, I really, people really should understand that, you know, just because, our, ugh, so many things happen today, that we do take time out of work and our personal lives to try to help as many people in town as we can, and today was a valiant effort on our part.
Yeah, it's pretty, you know, the one selectman that's on vacation left out.
Took a good time to go on vacation.
Lisa had to get dragged out of work today.
Yeah.
That's just the way it is, that's why you guys pay us the big bucks.
We'll make, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, I'll second it, all in favor?
If you'd like to turn the work up, yeah.
All opposed?